Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're calling to order the regular meeting of the Jackson City Council, City of Jackson, Mississippi, February 25th, 2025. We are starting this meeting at 10:06 a.m. We have, is our pastor here? Okay, thank you. Pastor Edward Thomas of Greater Northside Missionary Baptist Church, welcome for Ward Four. We're so glad that you're here. Thank you. You will lead us in our invocation, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Hartley if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance immediately following. Everyone, please stand.
Shall we pray together? God in heaven, creator of all, sustainer of all things, and one who does all things well. We come this morning, first and foremost, to give you the glory, for you are God and God alone. In your word, you tell us to pray for those who have authority over us. And so it is in that edict that I come this morning, to lift up all of those who are in authority over us, but especially to those who serve as councilmen in these respective wards of Hines County. Lord, we first and foremost acknowledge that it is you who sets up kings and kingdoms. It is you who rules and superrules. And by your divine appointment, you have assigned each of them an allotment to govern. And so we pray, Lord, for wisdom for each and every one of them. We pray, God, that they would lead in a manner that would be pleasing in your eyesight and uplifting to your kingdom, that as they discuss matters that are pertinent to Hines County, Lord, that they would make decisions not just for their particular wards, but in respect to all citizens of Hines County, for the betterment of this county and this city. We pray, dear Father, that you would grant unto them wisdom and understanding, and above all, Lord, that every decision they make not be taken lightly, but, Lord, would, they would consider the weight of their decision and ask you for the guidance they need as they govern. Bless us all and keep us in your eyesight, we pray and praise. We all sit together, amen. Amen.
Praise the Lord, let's all face lightly, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you, Pastor, for that beautiful invocation. Colleagues, any introductions or comments this time for many of you? Mr. Banks?
Yes, thank you. Madam President, I'd like to open this meeting and close this meeting in honor of Walena Johnson Cole, who is the mother-in-law to Kathy Cole, who passed, I believe that was earlier this week, and will be penalized and life will be celebrated on Friday. In addition, I also want to take the time, on a brighter note, to congratulate Coach TC Taylor and coaching team Robinson in the HBCU NFL Legacy Bowl with the joint team effort of all SWAC teams, Jack State, Graham, and Alcorn, and those that I forget to name, but in their win against the MEAC teams. Just want to congratulate TC Taylor and Ashley Robinson, they continue to represent Jackson, Mississippi well.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley, Mr. Foot, but first, I want to just make sure everyone who's joining us online, please make sure you mute your device. Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I just want to take a moment out and just, you know, just pause in remembrance of the Hines County Deputy Sheriff that was recently slain in the line of duty. It is, in fact, a very dangerous job that we asked him to do, and, you know, the unexpected can happen. So, please, I know the police, they have a family. They have a family of police officers, and when one gets hurt, they all grieve. And that impact us so much. So, please, remember them, remember their family, remember their police officers everywhere in your prayers. And when you get a chance, support them, pack them on the back, and just say, "Thank you for what you do."
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Mr. Foot?
Thank you. I likewise wanted to open and close the meeting in honor of Deputy Martin Shields Jr., Shields Jr., and his family for the terrible incident and the terrible tragedy that, so scary to our law enforcement community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. All right, we have no public hearing today, so we're moving on to public comments, which I have just misplaced that sheet paper. I think I have accidentally stapled it to something. Do you have another one handy? I am so sorry. Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, all right, just as a reminder that we have allowed three minutes for public comment, and we ask that you respectfully adhere to those three minutes. When you get to this microphone over here, please state your name for the record. All right, first, we have Mr. Thomas Thompson, who is here to speak to us on a code enforcement case. Mr. Thompson, welcome.
Good morning. I was wanting that to be passed out. Could you pass that out to them? Okay, yes, my fourth time up here. I went to the planning board meeting, and it's about removing one dog. And the person handling this is Esther Ainsworth. Anyway, I've had a problem with her for over 10 years, not enforcing the law that's in Jackson. And so I'm just going to, I'm not going to say what I was originally going to come up here and say. I just want the code enforced for once. And I was hoping the mayor would be here, so I can ask him a question, and his chief of staff. And, but my next-door neighbor works for the City of Jackson, she has gave him nothing but favoritism all this time. And she has violated my rights, discriminated against me, given him more than favoritism. And so I came up here the last time, and everybody voted that he had to come into compliance with the two-dog rule. And, you know, this has been going on a real long time, and I'm tired that the city's not enforcing its laws. Something is horribly going wrong with this situation. And like I said, this is my fourth time up here, and I really was going to come up here and say things that were probably not going to be what you would want to hear. But instead of me pointing out a bunch of people that I've dealt with, high-ranking city officials, snubbing their nose at me, not calling me back, not telling me lies, I just want this enforced for the final time.
Thank you.
This all goes back to the dogs barking. I never could get y'all to do nothing about barking, kept on saying they would. High-ranking police officers, animal control officers, I never could get them to do nothing. And I think they playing me for a fool, but I'm not a fool. And I just need for this, at least on the, on the, him getting, you know, coming into compliance with the one dog. And this still ain't over with, even if, you know, even if I get that done, and it's supposed to be done. They put me, I had to sit three hours over there in the planning board meeting. She intentionally put me on the last, so everybody couldn't hear what I was going to say. And then when I came here, and y'all had, you know, all seven of you were here, and anyway, she, again, she put me at last. Now, maybe, maybe that wasn't intentional, but I believe it was.
Well, thank you for, I'm so, I'm sorry. I'm sorry this is taking so long. I know you heard the whole thing. Dr. O'Malley and the mayor did not. I know some of us have gotten phone calls about this situation as well. Mr. Wright is, or Mr. Mayor, this is a situation where he's being frustrated because he keeps asking for help, and he doesn't seem to be getting any response.
Help and what with dogs?
Madam President?
Dogs.
If I may?
Yes, Mr. Hartley.
I've had a chance to speak with last week, and I see some frustration here. I think a lot of it may be miscommunication. The gentleman, again, you know, he, there was an issue with the number of dogs in a code, in a zoning violation. And then he came before the council, and he spoke on behalf, and then apparently there were certain assurances that the ordinances would be followed. But what ended up happening is now, I think we need to perhaps get back in touch with him. Again, this is not a council issue right now, the ordinances are out there. So I think we need to, in fact, follow up to make sure that communication is done, so he'll know exactly how many animals there, and the ordinances are being followed. And I think, if I'm not correct, is that to summarize it adequately?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay. That's the resolution he's looking for. And I think if we can just connect the communication gap here, then I think the situation can be resolved.
And it's Mr. Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Thompson, I'm still piecing together what the discussion is. But what I will do, if you give me a moment for the rest of public comment to conclude, I will step outside with you, along with our JPD officers, and better understand what your challenges are, and see if we can't find resolution to it. Is that sufficient for you, sir?
Well, just need for the laws to be enforced.
Okay.
No more, no more kicking the can down the road. I mean, this is Ms. Ainsworth that's really done this. Do y'all know anything about it? Do you and your chief of staff?
No, that's what I'm saying. I don't know anything about it.
You don't know nothing about it.
And so that's why I want to step outside with you, because it's difficult for me to manage, you know, whatever the circumstance is, if I don't understand it. So I just want to better understand the circumstance, and then I will, I will follow up on, you know, what has or has not happened. That's what I would do.
Okay. Well, like I said, I'm going to say it right again, I want the law enforced, no more favoritism for this man.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, are you willing to wait for me to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll be out there in just a minute.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. All right, and Mr. Mayor, just, I don't know if you have this, but there is an active code enforcement case on this item.
Okay.
All right, and I'm sorry to catch you cold on that.
Oh, look.
All right. Um, hang on just a minute. I need to get, Ms. Jordan, any thought on, we're okay?
We are.
Okay, all right. Next speaker is Zach Service. There's no, nothing by his name on what he's speaking about. You have three minutes, Mr. Service.
Thank you, Zach Service, resident Ward Three, independent candidate for mayor. I have before you a proposal for an ordinance that would propose community service as an alternative to fines for non-criminal traffic and littering violations. This ordinance will reduce financial burdens on residents while addressing public beautification and safety. Right now, many residents, especially low-income individuals, struggle to pay fines for minor traffic violations and littering offenses. Instead of benefiting the community, these fines go into administrative costs or collection efforts. Under this ordinance, residents can choose to comply or complete community service instead of paying a fine. For every $10 of a fine, and this could be adjusted, I wrote this quite a while ago, so it may not be a fair amount at this time. An offender performs one hour of service cleaning parks, roadsides, and public areas. This not only helps them, but also improves Jackson's infrastructure and quality of life. So I would like y'all to take a look at that. I've been working to try to meet with some council members on how we could accomplish this, but I really do think that part of this blight issue and beautification issue could be solved by simply saying, "Hey, if you don't have the money," or "If you committed littering violation, then you can start by picking up litter and picking up trash." And that costs the city almost nothing, except maybe the man-hours to supervise the work, and we'd actually be able to accomplish something with that. Now, secondly, I want to address something most people probably don't know. In 2018, we had a company called Megapatch Come with a revolutionary product called Polymer Concrete that could patch potholes that would last up to 25 years. We had a contract to do 400 potholes with them, and the person was required to subcontract to a minority contractor, which, if I recall correctly, is not out in public, so I would have to make a records request, but I think it was Lucius Wright. That subcontractor then came to the owner of that business and said, "If we're going to continue this work, you're going to need to give the mayor a piece of that." And this person refused, so the mayor could not find him in breach of contract, so therefore he chose not to pay a $20,000 invoice. And for that very reason, that person took the product to Canada, and we no longer have it in Jackson, and you get the crappy coal asphalt mixed patches that we have now. So I would like us to hold the mayor accountable, and for him to answer as to why you allowed your own personal gain to take priority over the repair of roads in the City of Jackson. If you care to reply to that.
All I will say, Mr. Service, I will not give you a platform in order to make false claims. That is an out and utter lie. That's all I have to say.
I appreciate your comment. I hope y'all do something about that. Thank you.
All right, let's move on. Thank you. We are now moving on to Elena Slaughter, who is here to speak about vacant housing. I'll make tier.
Hello. My name's Lana. I, I've talked to several people at the, at the mayoral debate, and there's some needs that are obviously needed in South and West Jackson, and I took it upon myself to, okay, sorry, that goes my, my ear, to see if there were any available, and there are in South and West Jackson.
Can you pull the mic?
Yeah, pull it down.
It can actually pull it.
And speak into it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
But yeah, in South and West Jackson, that could be used to, to help alleviate some of those needs. If it could be done, there is myself, a pastor, an RBT, and several other people, a nonprofit as well. I'm in the process of writing a grant that would possibly put a filtration system on a house, so that could not only provide drinking water, but it could help with some of the unmet hygienic needs in those areas. And I've also reached into my network, and I've got a lot of people ready to, in kind, donate if that were to happen. And there are a lot of single mothers that are, you know, really horrible, I'm a single mother, that are in a position that they have to leave their children to go work. And I can't imagine, I can't imagine being in a position like that. I thankfully don't have to leave. I'm able to work remotely. And I think that these moms need help. I think that we're, it's a danger to our up-and-coming citizens of Jackson, and we have a lot of people that are on standby and that would be more than happy to help. It's not that easy to figure out where to go to access different needs because of the website and stuff, so I think that it would just be a really good idea, and I would like for y'all to think about it.
Well, thank you. I would, do you have information with you that you could leave with our?
I can get that to you. It's not put together in a way that I would want to present that right now.
You can just send it to my office or to the clerk's office, and we can get it out to everybody.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Banks?
Thank you so much.
Yeah, just, just real quick.
Wait just a minute.
Yeah, just, just, just real quick. So you're asking for the ability for infiltration, filtration systems to be installed into people's houses?
Oh, no. I'm asking if there can be a city-owned property that could be used that's in a neighborhood, and the filtration system would just then be a part of your property afterwards.
Okay, okay. And so I guess what will have to be done, and maybe legal help is research to see if our ordinance will allow that to happen. I think it's a great idea.
Lots of houses have them. It's just a normal, normal housing system.
Okay, all right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for coming before us today. Next, we have Tony Williams, who wants, he's from 3844 North Avenue, who wants to talk about creek overflow. Welcome, Mr. Williams. State your name for the record, please.
Praise the Lord. Good morning, everybody. My name is Tony Williams, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of some of your residents in the President Hill neighborhood. And it's about a creek that runs behind their house that allows, when it rains, the water to flow through and goes back out into the river. Well, I've been out there to check it out, because they have been complaining that they're not getting anybody to come out and look at the properties. It's four houses on Flag Chapel Circle, and they are, the yards are being saturated after every rain, whether it's a mountain rain or a major rain, it's like a river. They're getting sinkholes in some of the neighbors' yards, and once it rains, the yards are basically unwalkable and unmowable. They have to allow growth to grow up, because they can't get a lawn mower back there to be able to take care of their properties. And this has been going on for quite some time. They've been calling, they've been talking to others, and no one has came out. And see, this is the type of neglect that as residents of Jackson, we cannot afford to have from our city officials not coming out to at least show some interest in what's going on, because these are homeowners who have spent their hard-hold cash to make sure that they have somewhere that's livable, habitable, and that it's not an eyesore, there's no blight. And these are people that have really have been some real good citizens to try to do the best that they could, but it's not their problem. This lake, if you can go back there and you'll see, I mean, this creek, it's plainly due to the fact that's lack of maintenance, routine maintenance. Stuff like that has to be kept up. I mean, you have to at least have a routine maintenance plan, you know, whether it's annually or whatever it is, but you can go back there and see that it's been total neglect. There is no maintenance going on whatsoever over the few years, and we're talking about 10 years. And now it's just got to a point now that it's just about to run the residents off their property. I mean, the property value is going down, and then the foundations are being affected. And then when they can't get anyone to come out and, and show some interest in their problem, that's where we got a problem. And so that's why I'm here. We got to do better, council people. Mr. Griselle, just be your ward, so, you know, you should take an interest and make sure that you get somebody out there so they can see what the problem is, so they can address this problem, so that these citizens can feel like somebody cares, and it's not just talk, lip service. We done had enough lip servicing. And calling on the phone don't get us done, don't get nothing done. That don't get nothing done. It seem like they brush you off, and you don't hear from them anymore. So you guys got to do better. These citizens need you. We got too much blight going on. We got too many road problems going on, but no interest not to be shown. We don't see nobody out there. Right now, I'd like to know where Thelman Board is, because our Public Works Department sucks right now, you know? And so I'm just being honest with you. You know, from what I see, you know, reason I say that. I'm in every municipality around here, Madison, Riddle, Brandon, Pearl, Byron, Clinton, and I don't see none of this stuff that I, in those municipalities that I see here.
Sir, thank you so much for coming before us today, but your time is up.
Okay, well, I wish you guys.
And I appreciate the fact that you know how to use a mic, so thank you.
Ms. Glan, all right. But anyway, take care of your business, y'all.
All righty.
Excuse me, I think that's Ward Two you're speaking of, and I'm the newly elected person.
You're President Hill? President Hill is your ward?
Yes.
My bad, Ms. Griselle.
Yes, sir.
So, if you were, just give me those, what did you say on Flag Chapel?
Flag Chapel Circle.
Flag Chapel Circle, okay, we'll look into it. Thank you very much.
Where they really need you, and you know they, they got somebody at homeowners out here, so they definitely.
Well, I'll step out and talk to you guys.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Oh, that's great, and welcome, everyone. Glad you're here. All right, colleagues, that ends our public comment section. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. Clerk?
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second on this item, assuming there's no need to call any of them out. All in favor? It is a vote of four to?
I voted for.
Five, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. All right, it's a vote of five to zero. Let the record reflect that Councilwoman Lee has stepped out and?
Clay.
Clay, I mean. Oh, y'all, I've done it again. Oh, my Lord, have mercy.
It's an adjustment.
It's a huge adjustment. I'm sorry, my brain's plugged in. Councilwoman Clay, and it has stepped out, and Councilman Stokes is not here, so, all right. If I can get the names right, we'll let the record reflect that. All right, all right, now we're going to do introduction of ordinances. Item number 10.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi to modify Chapter 114 of the City of Jackson Code of Ordinance to create Chapter 114, Article 5, for the purpose of ordinances related to the regulation of medical cannabis business.
Okay, there's no action taken on this today, because it's just an introduction. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this item? All right, absolutely none. We did not need to discuss it in work session yesterday either. Would, Mr. Keaton, is he here? Would he like to just briefly explain to us what this is? He's not here. Well, colleagues, we'll take it up. Oh, there you go. Hello, welcome.
Hello, Eeka Hoover, Office of Economic Development. So this is just an attempt for us to license medical cannabis businesses in the same fashion as the State of Mississippi and other municipalities in the state. So right now, we are only able to charge or to find, to offer, to collect fees for these businesses based on the current privilege license ordinance as per the State of Mississippi. However, a couple years back, the State of Mississippi instituted a different fee structure for regulating medical cannabis businesses. And so the city just wants to bring our ordinance or institute an ordinance, which is up-to-date and in line with the state's statute.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, any, Mr. Foot?
Okay, so, does it increase the fee that the, the permit or the person seeking a permit would pay? And if so, how much? What would be?
It does increase the fee. So right now, a person in the medical cannabis industry will pay approximately $40, which is substantially lower than the state amount. The state amount right now ranges from about $2,500 to $5,000, and the City of Jackson is only charging about $40. So this ordinance will increase the City of Jackson's ability to collect $1,000 per business as opposed to 40.
So how does that compare with other municipalities?
Other municipalities charge about $2,500 per cannabis, medical cannabis business. So Jackson is actually lower than other municipalities and the State of Mississippi.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we will take this up at the next city council meeting, which is March, March 7th, okay. I'm sorry, 11th, March 11th. Thank you. All right, we have another introduction of an ordinance, clerk.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, amending Article 3, Officers and Employees, Division 1, created in Section 172 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jackson, Mississippi, establishing a post-employment restriction for the City of Jackson employees regarding employment with city vendors or contractors.
Okay, once again, we're not taking action on this item today. We had a good discussion about this in work session yesterday. It has been introduced by fellow council member, Mr. Griselle. It has been introduced by fellow councilmember, Mr. Griselle. And so, Mr. Griselle, I'm happy to let you have a moment to talk about this.
Thank you. So, I prepared a big statement here, but I'm not going to read the whole thing. But colleagues, the purpose of this ordinance is to help safeguard the public trust, ensuring that city employees do not exploit their prior positions for personal gain. And it's not uncommon for a lot of organizations, for organizations to have what's considered a non-compete clause or even a code of conduct, a business code of conduct, that help to, you know, maintain ethical standards and help govern employees as they, you know, work with vendors or contractors or anything of the sort. And so, what this does is help to not only prevent potential corruption, but also promote fairness in procurement processes. It helps to mitigate a revolving door whereas, you know, you may have some employees who help the city get a contract or who may help a contractor come to do business with the city, and then turn around and go and work for them for higher pay. And so, this ordinance helps to reinforce accountability. It helps to protect, I'm sorry, taxpayer dollars and help to ensure that the public service that we provide remains rooted in ethical stewardship. Now, our great city attorney, Mr. Martin, sent us some things via email last night, and I'm really appreciative of that. And for me, that was from the state perspective, but I think we need something locally to help to fully communicate where we stand in terms of a city. And so, colleagues, I'll yield to any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Griselle. Colleagues, any follow-up? Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks to Mr. Griselle for putting this forward. I think it's a good idea. Did you pattern this after another ordinance from some other city?
No, no, I didn't. But I remember in one of my previous employers, we had something similar. And it was a five-year. And I've talked to a couple of councilpeople who said, well, maybe two years. And I'm open to amending that, you know, to say two years. But again, I've worked in quite a few places. I've taught ethics for 15 years, and I think this is something that we need.
Okay, so, is this going to be in a committee somewhere where we can discuss all the nuances of it? Or is it just going to be come before us again?
It's going to come before us again, but I'm open to doing it right there on the floor.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright.
Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, just one question. How widespread is this as a problem? I mean, do we have a lot of folks? I know we had some, we lost some folks to Jackson Water, and that was pretty significant. I'm just wondering now, for the sake of the city, how bad of an issue is it?
I wouldn't say that it's a big problem, but it can be a costly problem. I remember when I was on the Civil Service Commission. We had a few issues with some employees that, you know, came before us at that time and who ended up leaving to go work for a contractor or a vendor. And so, again, we are already stifled when it comes to our human-
Resources.
Resources. And, you know, and I don't mind people going on to that green of pastures. But when it comes to ethical dealings and making sure that we're not doing business with respect to personal gain, when we move on to those green of pastures, I think we just need to put some safeguards in place here.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I want to thank Councilman Griselle for this. I think that this is more preventive in nature-
Correct.
-than it is trying to address anything. I will say that when we would talk about grass and weed and when we talk about a lot of the cuttings, one of the problems were, years ago, was that during those summer months, we would lose employees, and they would go start their own contracting business that would be doing business with the city. And we would have a shortage of sometimes those employees that would could grasp because we just weren't paying competitive enough. And so, this kind of helps us in our retention efforts. I think it's an all-around fix. So, I stand willing, ready to support this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. And I too want to thank Mr. Griselle for the energy and effort he put into this. I think it's a long time coming. And look forward to considering it at the March 11th meeting. And if there are any suggested amendments, I would encourage you to discuss them with Mr. Griselle before we get to that meeting. All right?
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on now to the regular agenda. We have claims, which, colleagues, before we even get it on the floor, I just want to make sure you can be looking through your papers and finding these amendments. All right, clerk?
Order approving claims appearing at Pages 238 to inclusive thereon on municipal docket of claims in the amount of $22,330,994 for and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
Second, we have a motion and a second on claims. Mr. Malumbeka?
Good morning, Fidelis Malumbeka, CFO. We do have a few amendments on this docket. So, the first one, we need to remove four invoices to Johnson Controls. And we have supplied copies of those particular invoices to the clerk. And so, I'm not sure if you want me to list them?
Yes, yes, sir.
Madam President, I moved that we amend claims to remove the invoices reflected as handed to us by the CFO. And in that amendment, that we add invoices for National Council Traditional Arts, National Council Traditional Arts twice, Metro Common Utility Contractors LLC, Metro Common Utility Contractors LLC to that item. Is that correct?
Did you mention-
In Hemp Hill.
Hemp Hill.
At Hemp Hill.
In Hemp Hill.
Invoice 10, it's squished, it's squished up in there. It's right up, it's, there's no space.
Okay, okay. Did we, and I second it, if we covered all the items?
Yes.
Okay, second it.
All right, thank you, colleagues. All right, so, we now have this amendment on the floor.
Oh, I see you, okay.
Mr., any questions, Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. The Hemp Hill invoice, it says $288,733.55, and it says interest. Is this interest that we're paying because we were late in paying other invoices?
Yes, if you recall, several months ago, we paid some outstanding invoices minus the interest because I know the CAO's office, Legal Department, and Public Works had to go through those. And so, they've done all the work, and this is the amount that's due.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. Mr. Banks?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Malumbeka, these, so, these are all going to be covered out of fund, what fund?
For Hemp Hill.
Well-
Oh, so, the Johnson Controls, that's Human and Cultural Services.
So, that, all those are being removed though, right?
Yes.
Okay. And the ones that are added, Hemp Hill is fund for?
No, no. No, Metro Communication is fund for.
Alright, so, Metro Communication is fund for. And that's, what is fund for?
Technology.
Technology, so it's coming, alright. And does this leave sufficient enough? Was this planned in our budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then Hemp Hill is what fund to?
372.
372?
Yes.
And that's Public Works, right?
Public Works.
And then, the National Council for that's, is that Human and Cultural Service?
No, Planning and Development.
Planning and Development. And all of these had sufficient amount to cover it?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. All right, any other questions or comments about this proposed amendment? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstained, one abstention. And we appreciate that, Ms. Clay, because she just walked in. All right, now, we have claims before us as amended. Any other questions or comments, colleagues?
Just-
Yes.
Just one.
Mr. Foot was first, and then I'll, Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. My question is, on this first of the larger claims, the Jackson Public Schools' transfer of public utility taxes of $17,983,510. The, which utilities are paying that much in taxes? Is that from the energy?
So, Ms. Foot, if I could cover all the four large claims and then come back to your question? Right, so, the four largest claims on this docket-
Hang on just a minute, Mr. Malumbeka. I apologize for not recognizing you right immediately. Mr. Hartley, can your question wait?
Yes, it can wait.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Malumbeka.
So, the four largest claims on this docket are as follows. The first is Jackson Public Schools in the amount of $17,983,510.22 paid out of Fund One, General Fund. This is for the transfer of public utility taxes. The second is public employees' retirement system in the amount of $1,060,218.13 paid out of Fund 55, Disability and Relief. This is for the transfer of taxes February 2025. The third is MV Contract Transportation in the amount of $401,316.22 paid out of Fund 187, Transportation. This is for the November 2024 Fixed Route Service. And the fourth is MV Contract Transportation in the amount of $401,144.77 paid out of Fund 187, Transportation. This is for the December 2024 Fixed Route Service. And that's a report for the four largest claims.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Hartley, did you have a question?
I just wanted to-
He was next.
I didn't answer his question. I did not answer his question.
Oh, you didn't answer his question.
I just was trying to find out which utilities were, that's a lot of money, 17 million. If there's more than one, or is it just one? Who is it?
Several, you know, Atmos, Atmos Energy, Entergy, Seaspire, all those utilities, and the property tax on the assets.
Property tax, okay. Alright, thank you.
All right. Thank you now, Mr. Hartley. Thank you for your patience.
Now, I appreciate the time. Ms. Malumbeka, again, we bring up this issue of paying, of paying our bills.
Yes.
How are we doing with that? I know we did restructuring, okay? We come out with a elaborate system so the vendors out there can check on the progress. Yet, we're still, now, we still backpaying things? Where are we at on that? And the progress of this new system that we put in place to prevent it?
Yes, we've made significant progress. I think what you're seeing here, we did pay invoices that were outstanding, but the interest portion needed to be researched more, right? That's why this is coming back up. But those actual invoices tied to this were paid. We now are utilizing the vendor self-service where vendors are now submitting invoices electronically. And we have a faster turnaround. I mean, we have reduced, and we'll share that report, where you will see, at one point in January of last year, we had about $10 million in outstanding payments. And now, we're down to maybe about $100,000 and change, right? So, we've made significant progress. We have established task forces that are working with departments to ensure that we are pushing all these payments through.
Okay, do you have all your personnel structure in place? I know at one time, we had a system that can guarantee, you know, there's oversight.
Right.
Is everything in place now?
Yeah, so, in part of, I think there was a third phase, which is getting some of those fiscal offices into a centralized place. The key personnel is in place now in terms of management. Fiscal Operations Manager is in place. We have liaisons in place. So, that's working well. And really glad to see the progress that we've made.
You just understand that, you know, I believe in Jackson, City of Jackson having a good name-
Yes.
-when it comes to paying our bills and credibility with those folks that work, that work with us. And so, that's my only aim here, is to make sure that we, in fact, have some, because I hear it out on the streets. I hear it from vendors, okay? So, we need to change that whole reputation. And I appreciate all the changes you've been making to that department.
And we have the touch points with the vendors. I think where, right now, where we're seeing some gaps with certain vendors, as we shared with you, we were requiring all vendors to get on our-
Your portal.
Vendor self-service portal. There are some vendors that have been slow to reacting to that. And so, they're still using the old process of trying to submit paper invoices. We are redirecting them to go online. And so, that's where we've seen some delays with a few vendors. But once they get on, they can see, they can actually get online, and they can see the status of their invoice.
Okay, and is there someone from the staff that can kind of hold their hands if they have difficulties with that? They may know everything about plumbing, but they may not know a whole lot of computer stuff. Is there someone from the staff that can help?
We do. So, some of the new positions we've put in place, we have folks who are actually checking systems daily and responding to these vendors. So, there's a touch point. And they're able to assist them, right? Because there's some that have actually come through me, and I've directed them to those individuals, and I have been pleased with the outcome.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Banks.
Yeah, and this question is just for tracking purposes only. The Hemp Hill, the $288,372, that's modernization?
Yes.
Alright, what's left? Because I know we've been doing some activity out of that account. And then, we're using the rest of it to leverage. Do we, do you have an amount of what's left in there?
So, in terms of the account balance, roughly, without looking, I think it might be about $16 to $17 million.
Alright, okay.
All right, thank you. Any other questions about claims? Yes, or Mr. Hartley?
Just one follow-up from that. About $17 million, is any of that encumbered? Is there any of that that we're obligated for?
No, so, part of it-
Or obligated to a program?
We'll cover debt service, and part of it is actually advancing the work. As we shared, we leveraged it for a bond financing. And so, we did have the provision to reimburse ourselves. So, part of it will go towards paying the bills on the work that's done, and then it will reimburse the account.
So, is there any left after, you know, we take care of our obligations?
Yes, there'll be, because I think once we cover the debt service and then whatever we pay out and reimburse ourselves, so we will have a balance of probably about ten million dollars floating.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on claims? All right, colleagues, Clark, would you please let the record reflect that Mr. Griselle left the room because of the conflict with Jackson Public Schools payment on mortgage claims? All right, is there anything else about claims? All right, if not, all in favor? Post carries with a vote of three to two. All right, we are moving on now. And colleagues, just so you know, item fourteen has been pulled and item thirty-nine has been pulled. All right, thirteen payroll.
Order approving gross payroll, including payroll deduction claims number three-one-three-three-four, to and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of five-zero. All right, we are skipping fourteen, fifteen. Clerk?
Order authorizing the payment of the sum of twenty thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents to MetLife for accidental death and dismemberment coverage premiums earned for the months of October, November, and December 2024, and ratifying the sum of six thousand, seven hundred four dollars and fifty-seven cents paid for premiums earned for the month of September 2024.
So move.
Second, we have a motion and a second on this. We had a lengthy discussion about it during work session yesterday. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of five-zero, thank you. Item sixteen.
Order ratifying goods and services received by the Jackson Police Department for Moore's Drywall and approving payment of invoices submitted by Moore's Drywall.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of five-zero, thank you. Colleagues, item seventeen.
Order ratifying goods and services received by the Jackson Police Department for Efficient Power and Light and approving payment of invoices submitted by Efficient Power and Light.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Comments or questions, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of five-zero, thank you. Item eighteen.
Order ratifying the mayor's execution of an agreement between the Jackson Police Department and Power DMS Digital Management Software for the renewal subscription term of twelve months.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six-zero, thank you very much. Item nineteen.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an addendum to the lease agreement with I-55 Management LLC and I-55 T LLC to cover the cost of improvements to the facility for the Jackson Police Department Precinct Forest operation.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We did discuss this in work session yesterday. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of six-zero. Item twenty.
Order authorizing the payment of the sum of seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars to Yamaha for carts reported missing from the Pete Brown Golf Course formerly Sunny Guy and not returned to Yamaha after expiration of lease M-19010429.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We talked about this at length yesterday during work session. Any additional questions, Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, I've had some, I just wanted, is there anyone that could speak to this? Because I've had folks, you know, reading and say, hey, you know, like to hear a good explanation. Is Arch and Rex anybody?
Mr. Mayor, is Dr. Mohammed here? Can you respond to this?
I thought I saw him earlier, but what's the, I'm sorry, I'm making other notes.
Golf carts, the missing golf carts.
Yes, so what Dr. Mohammed shared with us yesterday, these golf carts, this is based on theft that took place over the course of more than six years. I think he said that the first golf cart was taken in 2019, all the way up until 2022. He said over the last couple of years, we have not sustained any loss. He said that's due to the fact that we have GPS on our, our latest golf carts and the fortification of the cart barn. So we've taken proactive steps in order to mitigate the loss that has happened. But he's been trying to put this item forward for some time in order to recoup that which we lost.
And just one follow-up. Now, we, we do have a program that goes around and, and inspect equipment to make sure it's marked and it's still there on the city's inventory.
Yes, that, that takes place. In fact, there was inventory down on some of our vehicles and equipments, I think, this past summer.
My question is simply this, how are we doing on that? I've, I've heard, again, you hear a lot of stuff through the grapevine, but I've heard that, you know, there are some things that come up missing. So how are we doing on that in general, in addition to the, you know, golf court?
Well, it's a big operation, Councilman. So the reality is, is that things will come up missing, right? But we are managing it through the departments and trying to maintain and understanding. And when we see, you know, theft that takes place, we try to make certain that we address it in its appropriate manner. You know, whether it's the installation of cameras at things like our, our lot, what do you, what do you call the lot? The impound, impound lot, right? Or other places where we see theft taking place, we try to address it. But sometimes there are people who watch and have knowledge of the inventory we get. Sometimes, you know, unfortunately, even on occasion, it can be those that work internally that have knowledge. And so we have to make sure that we maintain and address the situation appropriately.
And we are taking a strong stance, say, for a city employee decide to walk on with it, we need her or something.
Absolutely. You know, without talking in specifics, there have been city employees that we've had to hold accountable, not only through termination, in some instances, there have been criminal charges.
Good, good. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? It carries with a vote of six-zero. Item twenty-one.
Order requesting the mayor's execution of a facility use agreement between the City of Jackson and Level Woods Sites Baseball Association, Inc., for the non-exclusive use of certain baseball fields located at Level Woods Park.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of six-zero. Item twenty-two.
Order ratifying emergency procurement of a chiller for the J-Train Administration Building from Train USA, Inc., doing business as Train.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of six-zero. Twenty-three.
Order ratifying and authorizing the payment of one thousand, two hundred and two dollars and twenty-five cents to B and E Communications, Inc., for procurement of services performed on May fifteenth, 2024.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of six-zero. Item twenty-four.
Order authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Nelson Nygaard Consulting Associations, Inc., to provide a transit-oriented development comprehensive work plan for Jackson's Public Transportation System, J-Train.
So move.
Second.
All right, good. We have a motion and a second on this. We did discuss it yesterday in executive session. Any additional, I'm not executive session, in work session. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, it carries with a vote of six-zero. Item twenty-five.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Mississippi Department of Finance and Administration to disburse two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a project that involves the demolition and/or removal of blight from properties in the city of Jackson and along Highway Eighty and south of Highway Eighty Quarter pursuant to Senate Bill Two-Four-Six-Eight.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We discussed this at length yesterday. Any, Mr. Hartley?
I'll defer to Councilman Foot.
Mr. Foot?
Thank you. This is great, another, some additional money to take on blight. And I just want to point out that the demolition of the Hotel O has been initiated yesterday. So it's really exciting for the citizens that drive up and down I-55 to see that work underway.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley was next, and then Mr. Banks.
Yeah, I wanted to, yes, I appreciate the work with Hotel O. Also, we need to get rid of that rubbish pile of a hotel over off of Bobby Rush Boulevard. That's, that's an ISO issue coming off the interstate, I-20. That's been there, the rubbish has been there for about a year. The abandoned hotel was there, well, since I took the seat. But I'm glad that we are making progress on that. I hope to see that rubble removed, you know, as soon as possible. My other question, though, was, well, I'll come back to me.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor and then Mr. Griselle.
So, one, with respect to the item, we thank both, I think, Representative Crudup and, trying to and Grace, and Grace Washington, for their support in securing this money. It will be directed to the areas in which they identified within their bill. And with respect to Hotel O, since it was mentioned, Councilman Foot, I pass the gratitude on to those who actually made that happen. Not only people within our Planning and Development Department, but Mr. Drew Martin stayed on this every single week for us. He communicated about this process. And it actually brings into full view what you said, Councilman Hartley, when you talked about the rubbish pile on Ellis Avenue. The reason that we went through those steps with Hotel O is because we've seen the consequences of when a private contractor and someone not operating with the city does it incorrectly, what happens? What happened with the Hotel O that is off by Ellis Avenue is that they did not properly remediate the asbestos. MDEQ stopped them, they tried to knock it down themselves. And so the city played no role in that, right? But now the city is facing the potential of a six-hundred-thousand-dollar tab that we will have to pick up to remove that. And so when our city attorney comes before us and says, listen, we have to do this correctly, he is saying that out of not only his understanding of the law, but out of experience. And so Drew, I know that we've stayed on you, I know that the media stayed on you, right? I know that people have expressed their frustrations, but you've shown commitment to this. And so I want to publicly thank you for taking this on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Griselle?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to first thank the administration and city legal for getting Hotel O where it needs to be. But I also want to reiterate and renew my strong desire to throw that wrecking ball into that building. I just want that on the record, thank you.
And I made one mistake, Bobby Rush Boulevard, not Ellis Avenue.
Right, Madam Chair, I remembered to come in, and it was along the same line as the mayor. And that is to, to thank all, all parties involved. The state representatives, you know, they're vastly outnumbered, and their power is somewhat questionable at times. But every now and again, they bring something home. What they're bringing towards that Highway Eighty corridor is going to be tremendous, okay? The funding for that, that old Pepsi building, old Coke building, and they've been major ISOs. And we have thousands of travelers along that Highway Eighty corridor every day. And so I'd like, I'd like to thank them as well for, for bringing that home. You know, and I'm still somewhat confused, and the attorney tried to explain it to me, how this asbestos thing was involved. There was no asbestos with the other Hotel O, is what I'm, is that correct?
Drew Martin, City Attorney, the Hotel O that's coming down, we had to do all the asbestos testing on, and the results were all negative. And that's why we're able to proceed as we are. The older one, the one at Bobby Rush Boulevard that's the rubble, did have asbestos, but the proper testing and certification wasn't done. It's unclear why or how that was done. There's some, some real questions about that that don't involve the city. What I can tell you about that pile of rubble, as we're calling it, we do have a bid out for the cleanup. It is far more expensive than it otherwise would be because of that asbestos. And we have made an ask of those same state legislators and hope that they can come through again to help us pay for that. But we're in the process of getting cleaned up one way or the other, and we're working with MDEQ in litigation related to that as well.
Yeah, and, you know, it's just astonishing that, I guess, the age of the building may make the difference. That I remember staying at that hotel over there off of Bobby Rush Boulevard when, when I lived on the coast and came up for headquarter meetings. And so, I mean, it was, but it's been there for a while. I just wanted to know the difference, because now I know we're going into hazardous waste disposal.
That's right.
Which significantly increased the amount of money that's going to be paid.
That's exactly right.
And I was just hoping that there was a way around that.
None that I'm aware of, but I, I wish to. Look, to be honest, we were surprised that there wasn't asbestos in the one that's coming down, but we were thankful that there wasn't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banks.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. While we're talking about this, I couldn't let this moment go by without stating the obvious historic precedence that this city has taken, that has never been done in history. And this goes for the Director of Planning, Jacquetton, and the Department of Planning, our legal department, our mayor's office and administration, and this council. Because never before in this city's history have we had a set aside budget amount for commercial properties to be demoed. And so this is just the first to come of the amount we set aside that's to be done. And so I think that we have to highlight that, because there's progress being made. You know, here before, we would struggle to deal with a commercial property, Casa Grande, Mayor. We struggled to deal with it because, because of you taking away budget from dealing with residential. But now we have our own line item just to deal with commercial properties that are nuisance within our communities. And I look forward and I'm excited about the work that we're doing towards that to make Jackson better. Thank you.
Mr. Banks, do you recall how much we've put in that during the budget process?
It's one point three?
Not enough, but it's better than zero.
My point is, we're, you know, we've set aside one point three, we've set aside one point three, but we sure do still need some help from our legislative groups.
It was a one hundred percent increase from where we are.
That's right. But thank you, Mr. Banks, for those really important comments, because you're exactly right. And one point three is certainly a good step forward, but we sure do still need help from the legislature.
Yeah, and, yeah, I'd like to thank
And we appreciate it.
I'd like to thank Councilman Banks also for that, and, you know, he was instrumental. And, you know, I attended all the budget hearings, he was instrumental in putting a lot of our money towards our, the citizens' priorities. And that blight was one of them. And I think we need to continue to encourage that during our budget hearings, is that let's take taxpayers' money and put it on the things that taxpayers are actually calling in about. And I just, and so I publicly like to thank Councilman Banks for his knowledge and wisdom in those budget hearings.
Could I add one thing, as long as everybody's thanking everybody? I wanted to mention Samantha Graves specifically in, in planning, because while I was checking on this daily and weekly, I relied entirely on her at every step of this process. And she did a tremendous job and does a tremendous job, so I wanted to make sure she got that.
Just one final thing. If there is any way that we can have, I guess we don't have any engineers or contract engineers, but any way we can go to DEQ and see if we can't work something out to, that's going to result in us having a larger bill for that disposal cost. I mean, maybe, can we do a test in different areas? Okay, this area is contaminated, this area is not. I'm just looking at that price tag, six hundred thousand is, is pretty hefty.
It, it is. The short answer is I don't know, but I'm happy to talk to MDEQ and see if there's some way to isolate certain portions. I think the problem is going to be that the asbestos is so entangled, for lack of a better word, with all of the other rubbish, there's no way to extract it without treating it all the same. But I don't, I'm not an engineer, and, and I don't know that.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, well, it's always good to have a moment to celebrate. So, but we're going to move on now and vote. All right, any, any other questions or comments before we call? All right, all in favor? It is a vote of six-zero. Thank you, colleagues. Item twenty-six.
Order authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City of Jackson, Bobby Chambers, and Ben Wiggins Remodeling for the Use of Healthy Homes Production Grant Funds to Implement Housing Repair Activities to Allow For An Increase In Contract Completion Time And Costs At Four-Six-Five-Five Estelle Drive, Jackson, Mississippi.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We discussed this item through thirty-one at length yesterday during work, during work session. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six-zero. Item twenty-seven.
Order authorizing amendment to the July second, 2024. Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Jackson, Delores French, and MultiCom, Inc., for the Use of Healthy Home Production Grant Funds to Implement Housing Repair Activities on the Department of Planning and Development's Healthy Home Production Grant Program.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of six-zero. Thank you. Item twenty-eight.
Order authorizing amendment to the July second, 2024. Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Jackson, Carl and Francine Fraser, and Ben Wiggins Remodeling for the Use of Healthy Homes Production Grant Funds to Implement Housing Repair Activities on the Department of Planning and Development's Healthy Home Production Grant Program.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, it carries with a vote of six-zero. Item twenty-nine.
Order amending the September twenty-fourth, 2024, agenda item authorizing the mayor to execute the contract between the City of Jackson, Randy Littleson, and Management Services Resource LLC to instead execute the contract between the City of Jackson, Linda Bryant, and Management Services Resource LLC for the Use Of CDB Funds To Implement Housing Repair Activities on the Department of Planning and Development's Limited Repair Program.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries six-zero, thank you, colleagues. Item thirty.
Order authorizing amendment to the contract between the City of Jackson, Janet Smith, and Ben Wiggins Remodeling for the Use of Healthy Homes Production Grant Funds to Implement Housing Repair Activities on the Department of Planning and Development's Healthy Home Production Grant Program to Allow For Additional Repairs In Time For Completion On The Contract.
So move.
Second.
Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, carries with a vote of six-zero. Thirty-one.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Jackson, L.C. Thickpen, and MultiCom, Inc., for the Use of Healthy Home Production Grant Funds to Implement Housing Repair Activities on the Department of Planning and Development's Healthy Homes Production Grant Program.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, it carries with a vote of six-zero, colleagues. All right, it carries with a vote of six zero, colleagues. Item thirty-two, we also had a lengthy, oh, item thirty-two. Get it on the floor first, I'm skipping ahead.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a release of lien and restriction on transfer against the property of Josephine Bronson located at 1950 Catalina Drive, Jackson, Mississippi, issued for the rehabilitation programs funded with the Community Development Block Grant received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? And just, colleagues, before we start on thirty-three, we did have a lengthy conversation about thirty-two through thirty-eight yesterday in work session, as they're all related. Clerk thirty-three.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a release of lien and restriction on transfer against the property of Miss Tina Brown located at 3850 Gamil Street, Jackson, Mississippi, recorded in the Hines County Land Records for the First Judicial District at Linspin's Book 7222, page 140, page 461, issued for the rehabilitation program funded with the Community Development Block Grant received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of six zero. Item thirty-four, clerk.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a release of lien and restriction on transfer against the property of Marilyn Brunfield located at 1009 West Haven Boulevard, Jackson, Mississippi, recorded in the Hines County Land Records for the First Judicial District at Linspin's Book 7234, page 9787, issued for the rehabilitation program funded with the Community Development Block Grant received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Development.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Mr. Banks, how did you vote?
In favor.
Okay, all right. It's a vote of six zero. Thank you. Item thirty-five.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a release of lien and restriction on transfer against the property of Miss Francine Buchanan located at 2510 St. Charles Street, Jackson, Mississippi, recorded in the Hines County Land Records for the First Judicial District at Linspin's Book 7244, page 7633, issued for the rehabilitation programs funded with the Community Development Block Grant received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of six zero. Thirty-six.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a release of lien and restriction on transfer against the property of Betty Johnson located at 403 Creston Avenue, Jackson, Mississippi, issued for the rehabilitation programs funded with the Community Development Block Grant received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So moved.
Second.
Colleagues, any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of six zero. Item thirty-seven.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a release of lien and restriction on transfer against the property of Miss Brenda F. Walker located at 864 Brendan Avenue, Jackson, Mississippi, recorded in the Hines County Land Records for the First Judicial District at Linspin's Book 7203, page 2980, issued for the rehabilitation program funded with the Community Development Block Grant received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Development.
So moved.
Second.
Colleagues, we have a second, a motion and a second. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of six zero. Item thirty-eight.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a release of lien and restriction on transfer against the property of Miss Pearl M. Wright located at 1531 St. Charles Street, Jackson, Mississippi, recorded in the Hines County Land Records for the First Judicial District at Linspin's Book 7230, page 2778, issued for the rehabilitation programs funded with the Community Development Block Grant received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Development.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional questions or comments?
Madam President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Banks?
Next time, let's make sure we get a memo from Legal to put all this in consent agenda.
I thought about that, Mr. Banks, idea, and I really agree. Agree. All right, yes. And before we vote, I just want to pause and say thank you, Ms. Sabrina, the clerk did an excellent job with all of that. We all got through it. All right, all, any other, any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Okay, we're, we're done. We're pulling thirty-nine and item forty.
Order accepting an amendment to the professional services agreement with City Collective US LLC for master planning services for Eubanks Creek to provide the budget for reimbursement expenses.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this item, colleagues? You may recall that these funds were from the legislature for this specific project. All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of six zero. We are now going to item forty-one.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a construction engineering and inspection services agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., for the Officer Thomas Ketchin Senior Drive Bridge Replacement Project, STP-7293-00001, LPA-109280701000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of six zero. Item forty-two.
Order ratifying payments and authorizing a contract with Comcast for cable services for the Office of City Prosecutor.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Mr. Banks?
Oh, no, no question. I'm ready to vote. I'm sorry, I'm trying to vote in a hurry.
All in favor? It carries with a vote of six zero. Item forty-three.
Order reviewing and continuing August 29, 2022, state of emergency.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of six zero. Item forty-four.
Order reviewing and continuing state of emergency.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is dating back to the flood. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I just, just wanted to ask if, since this dates back to 2020, and I don't think it's good to set a precedent of holding an emergency open for over a four-year period, is there a closeout or checklist plan to close this emergency out? Are things that are, that are left open? Just, just asking. Like, all of the reviews and, you know, those things, when it dealt with the flooding or creeks and all that kind of stuff, are we looking at closes out? And I'm not sure of the legal language when it comes to how, how long we can hold an emergency open, but I don't want to set, you know, a bad precedent for that. So just wanted to know if we're looking at some type of checklist to close this out.
Sure. Drew Martin, City Attorney, on forty-three, the August 29, 2022, when we do, we have looked at and need to continue that, so long as the water system is being controlled by Jackson Water. On the 2021, I can't remember that we looked, but we need to pull that one and look at it. If there's no longer a need for it, then certainly we can conclude it.
Okay, okay.
When we were in the budget process, I think, Mr. Banks, this came up, and we were still waiting on, Dr. Amory, are we still waiting on some payments, some money?
We were still waiting on some reimbursements regarding some things that have been disputed that we appealed.
Okay, okay, so there's, there's still a process.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good question, Mr. Banks.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Just one more thing, just to make it noteworthy, just for procedural standpoint to protect the city, when we run into those things, it might be good to amend it to say, due to whatever, doesn't have to be, you know, instead of just putting the same one over and over again, you know, and that way, even if we're, and I know last year the administration made a big jump to try to get as much as we can from Senate appropriations for the creeks, and so those things, those items, might need to amend them every now and then to just state why, you know, it's still emergency-worthy, so that we can just keep good books with it. All right, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? It carries with a vote of six zero. Let's see, item forty-five.
Order authorizing the mayor to enter to a lease agreement with the Hines County Human Resource Agency to operate his Head Start program at the Westside Community Center, Martin Community.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of six zero. We have some discussion items. I'm going to hold Mr. Stokes' items, so Legal, that puts us with you, but just before you jump up there, are you going to tell us that we need to go into executive session?
Yes, ma'am, we have one item only, but it needs executive session.
All right, colleagues, let's finish out the agenda, and then we'll bring back item forty-eight. The monthly financial reports is required to, you know, state law. I got mine, I opened it, I looked at it, I read it. Everybody, who else saw theirs?
Yes, yes.
Can I see?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. Colleagues, anything you need to announce before we go into executive session? Any announcements? Mr., oh, did you raise your hand, Mr. Foot? No?